Hello and good evening. It is six o'clock, a little after six o'clock on May 26th. Want to call our city council meeting to order. And sorry for a little bit of a late start. We're trying to get everyone logged in and ready to go. So with that, we will go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, and just as in the first. Okay, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer.
I'm here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate? Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Geek?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
All seven members virtually present.
Okay, thank you. And I see we have some attendings as well that are in attendance. So again, as usual, I think you've all been on, so we're not going to go through the whole spiel. If I see your hand up or one of the other moderators see your hand up, they'll let me know. And then I will get to you. It may take a few seconds, but just know I'll try to get to you as quick as I can in the middle of everything else. And with the buttons, the red or the orange arrow just will get you to open your little tab there to raise your hand if you need to or not. So we will go ahead and go ahead and move forward. I hope everyone had a good Memorial Day. It was a little weird with way everything's been and the miller moth invasion has been really creating a lot of chaos in my home and I hope you guys are surviving that as well. But with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Item number four, we have no presentations and/or board commission committee appointments. I will just go right into item number five, city council agenda requests and announcements, and I will start with Ms. Duncan, anything?
Good evenings, everyone. I can't wait for some type of enormacy and to see all of you again in person. I feel honored to be a part of this body and I think this is a real special group of people. I appreciate and respect all of you. And with that being said, I attended two virtual meetings since we last met. I attended the virtual Evans Army Community Hospital Award and Change of Command Ceremony. I also attended the webinar on Friday, May 22nd with representatives from legal counsel of the governor's office, Denver's mayor Hancock's office, and the CDP HE. Reach Pikes Peak just posted that they had an increase of people needing food donations. So they are asking for donations of food to give away on tomorrow, starting at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And they will return back to Monday giveaways on next Monday. And that's all I have.
I'm on mute. Thank you, Ms. Duncan. I'll go to Mr. Geek next. Anything from you?
Yes, I would like to congratulate you on your services as a teacher and I'm looking forward to finding out what else you're going to do for your life.
Me too. Thanks. Mr. Applegate?
I just want to say I'm really happy that finally we're getting some restaurants and dining places open now. It looks like things are starting to turn in the right direction and it's just going to be a lot better. I think things are going to improve.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with you. I'm excited to see those things opening up as well. And if I look to my right, Ms. Estes?
Remembering to turn my microphone on. It's good to see everybody tonight, even if it's this way. I want to give a thanks out to Scott Trainer and Lois Landgraf for supporting our local businesses. We all went and picked up lunch last week and got out and tried to support the community that way. And I wanted to thank Scott for getting that organized. Like Counselor Duncan, I've been attending a bunch of webinars. I have attended the ones with through the governor's office on the updates on COVID-19. I have attended one phone conference today with Michael Bennett on some legislation that he's passing through to hopefully help Colorado. I have attended CMLs, their conference on for newly elected people. So I've been doing their webinars. We have the second part of that one tomorrow. So just keeping busy through the webinar ring to depth. So just thanks out to everybody that's hanging in there and we'll get through this. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Estes. Sounds like you've been pretty busy. Mayor Pro Tem?
A couple of things. Hopefully you can hear me ahead. Some oddly enough, the tech guy had all kinds of tech problems this evening, so.
We can hear you.
Sorry about being a little bit late there. One thing, I appreciate the update on the budget situation that Scott has provided. Scott, on the next one, would it be possible to have, on the next one of those updates, would it be possible to have John Lewis address? If we're nearing any thresholds for any kind of taper-related issues as far as refunds or ratchet backs or anything like that?
Yes, absolutely. Happy to do that.
All right, thanks. I just want to make sure that we're not getting in that kind of danger as we deal with the COVID things. Secondly, it's not quite as good a news as I was hoping to bring to this meeting, but I still think we're moving in a positive direction as far as the Fountain Creek Watershed District and our creek situation. Since our last council meeting was at the Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee with quite a handful of council members, and I appreciate your support in being there and lending your support for their staff members. Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee, for anybody who isn't familiar with what they do. If anybody within the Watershed District comes to the district board asking for a project, we're so we're hoping to expend some of the $50 million that Colorado Springs Utilities paid into the Monetary Mitigation Fund. That advisory committee has a handful of criteria that they weigh each project against. Part of its urgency, part of it is safety-related, part of its infrastructure. But they've got some criteria that are specifically set forth in the Pueblo County 1041 construction permit that was issued for Southern Delivery System. And one of those criteria is we have to be able to show substantial benefit to the creek south of the Pueblo County line. There's some disagreement between those of us north of the county line and those of us south of the county line on how to interpret that particular clause. The disagreement seems to rest on whether the clause said specifically benefits Pueblo County or specifically benefits the Fountain Creek in Pueblo County. So while we sort of nailed some of that down, what the Monetary Mitigation Fund Committee could have done was to give us a flat no. What they did was to recommend to the board that we approve a task order for Matrix Design Group, that's the district's engineering group, to prepare some no kidding formal documents on conceptual alternatives for channel realignment and bank stabilization for that section of the creek as well as very solid current cost estimates for that. And then one of the other things that Larry Small added, which I really appreciated, was he wanted them to be able to provide a functional and quantitative as well as qualitative evaluation of how that project would benefit the Fountain Creek in Pueblo County. And Larry even put the task order language such that it could you could show not just benefiting the Fountain Creek, but he wanted to show directly benefiting Pueblo County so that either interpretation of the 1041 permit could be met. So Matrix has till the end of June to provide, or I'm sorry, they have to present their final report to the Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee on June 17th. Then they'll take it to the Technical Advisory Committee on July 1st, the Citizens Advisory Committee on July 10th, and then finally to the Watershed District Board for a report and potential action on July 24th. So we're still following following up on getting some actions done. Last Friday at the district board meeting, we were somewhat surprised to have a quorum, given it was going into a holiday weekend. But eight out of nine member governments were represented. And Commissioner Hart from Public County, who's this year's chair, was very enthusiastic about leaning into this task order and approving it. He was very, very supportive of getting this task order and getting some some quantitative data to support some interpretation of the 1041 permit. And then privately, he was, he also confirmed to me that he's, he's he too is very concerned about the safety aspects of what's going on down there. So he is hoping, he said, it may sound strange, but he's hoping that the quantitative data show that the board should move forward with a project using Monetary Mitigation Fund Committee money and getting something done. If it does, we're hoping that with the July, an end of July movement by the board, that we should have contracts put out for bid for a potential construction start date as early as October. That said, it's going to be kind of a long, a long project. When it gets started, that's going to be somewhere between a 15 and 18 month project minimum. Keep going. However, it's going to be, it's something we're we all believe we're actually in pretty strong need of. Speaking to Security, Whitefield and Sanitation, they are doing some conversations with the property owner just upstream. Just upstream from that area that we've been on Southmore Drive to to make sure that whatever the property owner did several years ago does not put their sanitation ponds in any danger. But then Mr. Heald, the district manager for security, Water and Sanitation assured me that those ponds up there are not by any means primary sanitation ponds. It's not a primary water treatment facility up there. So should there be a spill, it's going to be negligible for contaminant value. He said most of the water in there is actually seeping in from the creek and they keep doing sampling as they're required to do and finding negligible contaminants. So that made us feel a little bit safer. I'd say I wish I could have had a blank check and a go forward, but at least we got this much and hope to continue presenting good news on this front for the foreseeable future. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you for kind of doing all the heavy lifting with the Creek District and we know with everything that goes on there and all the politics between Springs and Pueblo. You know, hopefully they'll keep working with us as we're kind of the mediators and it seems like in the middle of all that. So hopefully they'll come to the table when we need it the most. So Ms. Thompson?
Good evening, everybody. I hope you're all doing really well. Like everybody else, I've had a ton of online meetings, which actually is kind of nice when some of them are supposed to be in Denver. You don't have to go up there. PPACG continues to move forward with different projects. Had two conference calls with Shoshana Lou, the head of CDOT on transportation funding cuts that are coming through. If anything that's a grant, like the project we have down here in Fountain, if grant money is involved, it's going to go through and keep moving forward. Other projects, the budget's just going to really be greatly scaled back and they'll go through regional processes to make sure everyone is getting a fair amount of money to their region and not any one region is being overlooked or getting an overly extended amount of money. Scott, there was one thing she said that I'm not sure if you got note of it, that they're trying to figure out a way to extend. Hang on, I just dropped my notes. Toll credits to municipalities that may not have the money to do matching funds right now. So you would have to contact them about these toll credits. You may know what they are, but I just made a note of them in the meeting about them possibly highway authority toll credits possibly being available if having trouble making matching fun, local funds. So I don't know if that's something you might want to check out. We had the what's that?
I just said, thank you. We'll follow up on that.
Okay. And the stack meeting, the State Transportation Advisory Council meeting was pretty much of this same just different cuts, but you got to talk with everybody from all over the state. So you know, we're not alone. White House call with President Trump and the nice thing was they had Melania on the line. She continuing to push her be best, working with mental health during this time in this crisis and keep, we need to keep that in a forefront as well. And I attended the Governor's Restaurant Webinar. Lot of confusion, lot of concerns about the what's coming down, what we were given the day before the meeting, what we were given the day of the meeting and what has come out are not the same. I would really request our citizens that are working with businesses that are trying to be compliant and get back open to be extremely patient. We had a couple of people just storm off today because you know, didn't want to be compliant and we're all in the same boat. We're all trying to move forward. So let's all just be a little patient with each other and give each other a little grace when we're going out and about. And some restaurants are going to be able to get open. But there's a bunch of restaurants that are saying that with the restrictions of half capacity, it's, they're going to have to stick with curbside service and we need to respect that. It's a business decision they make. And we need to not be rude or pressuring them to get open the way we think they should run business because they know what's best for their business. Okay, end of public service announcement. I would like to thank everybody for helping with our virtual Memorial Day. Mayors, thank you for doing a little part of that and to our police and fire department for getting out and doing the flag raising for us. And I think it was a good decision to do it virtual. I was over there for about a half an hour with Scott and it was nice to see citizens continuing to stop by for a moment of remembrance on their own. I also was on the town hall meeting with Councilmember Estes earlier today and Senator Bennett's office when he's proposing this thing called the Health Force. I have great concern about what he is proposing. I think we need to stay on top of that. The CTC meeting went on virtually this month. Oh, there are so many nonprofits doing so much in our community to help all our citizens. It is just amazing what's going on out there. But they wanted to make kind of highlight special kids and special families. They work with disabled kids and they're also now taking in their siblings. So if their parents are first responders or have to work and they can't find any childcare, they're not just taking the disabled kids. They're working with the entire family now. And as everybody pretty much knows, the library is back open again. And I wanted to share with you what Mary from the library said about the way they're operating. They've put all their employees into what they call pods. So they might have three people in Pod A, Pod B, Pod C. And that way, if anybody in any one of the, they're never there at the same time. So if anybody in a certain pod gets ill, that whole pod is recused for the for however long they have to quarantine. And then the next pot, they would clean it and sanitize it. And the next pot of different people would come in. So they're not mixing people and they can keep the library open. I think they've come up with a great plan to keep it open and keeping their people safe at the same time. Habitat Restore is back open if you want to shop there. And they're beginning to accept volunteers on their sites once again, and they do need volunteers in Fountain to keep building down here. So just a lot of stuff continuing to go on in our community. We just have great people down here doing a lot of great stuff. And we actually have started up with our PPACG Legislative Committee again also. The unnumbered PFOS bill that I talked about at the last meeting that we had concerns about an enterprise zone is dead for this session. We do still have House Bill 1119 to go through. And that is one we're supporting and that is in finance today and hopefully we'll be on to the Senate next week. I'd like to say congratulations to all the 2020 graduates that are hopefully going to be graduated by the time we meet again. So that's a long process to get through. So congratulations, everyone. Is that enough? I can keep going.
You're good. All right. And then I don't have anything. Apparently my camera keeps going in and out, so I got a new laptop I'm trying to work off of. So if it goes blank, I may just end up turning it off for the rest of the night, but we'll see how it goes. Trying to think if there's anything else that's come up that I know of. And I don't know anything other than we are going to try to do some in-person council meetings, hopefully starting in June. I don't know that all council members will be there. It's going to be, at least for the next month or so, maybe two months, we'll still allow for council members to stay home if they feel like they need to, for whatever reason, if you're taking care of others or you just need, you need to feel that or keep that safe distance away from everybody. That's quite okay. We'll, we'll continue to use this as well, this go-to webinar. But I think we will try for our first meeting in June. So keep an eye out, public, if you see that, we'll have it posted on our website and things like that as well to let everyone know if that works. But look for that on June the 9th, I think is our next meeting. Yes, June 9th. So with that, I will move on to public to be heard. We may ask that citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. Please sign up with the clerk. You should have gotten an email in. We may not be able to provide immediate answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you keep your comments three minutes or less. I'm going to look for hands. Ms. Huffman, do you have anything?
I don't show any hands raised right now, Mr. Mayor, but I do have an email that I received. Would you like me to announce that right now?
Go ahead.
Thank you. We received an email from a Ms. Megan McDonald. She, as far as I understand, owns the small gym Anytime Fitness in Fountain and wants to know when city council will consider letting these smaller gyms reopen.
Okay. And I know we Paul, if you can look into this for me on my, on my end, on my email, just email me back. But she did email council, it seems like. I never got it, but I got it through a reply from Ms. Thompson as she replied to her. We directed her to both the county commissioner as well as Senator Heisey and Ms. Landgraf in pushing those buttons as well as the governor, as we're still trying to work on what the health department is telling us as well as the county commissioner. So one of the issues I'm hearing from the county commissioners in these variance requests is they work on a variance request. It takes them days to get everything put together and there's a lot of steps that have to occur in order for a variance request to go past the commission. Once it goes past the commission, then it gets forwarded up to the state level. Usually around that time, the governor comes out and releases more things out. Out. So we're kind of, the county is trying to stay ahead of those things, but by the time it makes through the process, it just takes a while to get through. So we did forward her on to those and hopefully she can continue pushing that issue. I know a lot of the small gyms and pools are wanting to open up now too. I think those are aside from churches and those types of things. I have not heard on churches, but we'll see how that goes. But thanks for letting us know that. I do have a question. Is there any update on the shooting at 7-Eleven today? No updates from PD. They're still in the middle of the investigation. So as far as I know, everything that we've heard has come out in the press comp or the press release earlier today. So a couple of kids right now that were involved, they did apprehend somebody, but I'm not quite sure. I kind of read through it, but no big updates. And again, it's still early in the investigation. I hope that answers your question. I don't see any other hands or anything like that. So we will move on to our consent agenda. All items listed under consent, let me move this out of my way here. All items listed under consent are to be considered routine. It will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda because they're separately a discretion of the council. We have items A through D. What would council like to do with these items? Mayor Pro Tem?
Move to approve consent items 78 through 70 as presented.
And Councilman Geek?
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and second for our consent agenda. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. I will move on to item eight, Old Business 8A. Resolution number 20-037, resolution approving and a fee schedule for costs incurred in the administration and processing of license fees, service charges, applications, permits, vehicle inspection fees and other fees and charges, and authorizing the waiver of reduction of certain fees or charges. Who's going to be speaking on this one?
I believe Chief
Chief Maxon's on and I can answer any questions in reference to this item. We were updating our fire department fees to be in line with what our fire code is in the different categories. And also kind of marrying what goes on in our region with, with fees.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What's the difference? So the things printed in black are no changes. Things printed in red are changes, but why are some printed in blue?
Let me look at it.
Councilmember Thompson, I can answer that question for you. The, the line items that are listed in blue are new charges. Those in red have been changed. So their existing charges in red and then the blue are brand new ones.
That was, that was my assumption, but I couldn't find a like a key and it to explain it. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Looking at our attendees, I don't see any questions there. Okay, if there are no further questions on this item, what would council like to do? Mr. Geek?
Yes, I moved to approve Resolution 20-037 on the first reading. Is this the second reading?
It's just a resolution. So first or second? Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote? Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item nine, new business. We had no items removed from our consent agenda. We'll move into item 9B. Or yeah, 9B, Resolution 20-038, a resolution adopting an intergovernmental agreement with El Paso County for CARES Act Local Government Distributions. Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council. Thank you for letting me bring this forth. I've known I've talked about this a little bit in the recent past. The county is one of those jurisdictions, one of two jurisdictions in the state with over 5,000, 500,000 population, received an initial distribution through the CARES Act. And so they chose to split about a 40, take about 45% of their distribution and allocate that out to municipalities in the county to allow us to use those funds for coronavirus-related expenditures. And it's very restrictive as to what it can be used for. But the IGA that's in front of you right now is the intergovernmental agreement that we have with the county that allows us to receive the approximately 2.4 million from the county's CARE Act funding. And that's the long and short of it.
Okay, thank you. Scott, any questions from council? Let me look to make sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay. And I see no questions from public. I'm glad we got it and we're able to move forward. So looking good. Thanks for staying on top of that for us, Scott. If further questions, what would council like to do with this resolution? Mayor Pro Tem.
Move to adopt resolution two zero dash zero three eight.
And Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the resolution. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
I vote yes. I had wanted to say something though. I really. That's okay. I really appreciate the time and effort that our county commissioners put into this and the fact that they split it fifty-five, forty-five. Just explained to some people the reason they kept fifty-five was because they run, you know, larger departments like the Department of Health and emergency operations and things like that. But it took some time. They dispersed it down to where the money needs to be. They included the legislatures and discussions. I know Mayor Ottega, you were contacted. And I really appreciate the way they included us and didn't make a unilateral decision like Governor Paul listed.
Thank you.
To continue, Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, they, they were very fair and I think we got a lot more than we were expecting. So I'm very happy that we've got a great relationship with the county and they, you know, they took a big part of the pot too, because they run those organizations or those, those departments that are, that we benefit from as well. So that helps a ton. So we want to nine C. Review and adoption of resolution two zero dash zero three nine. A resolution establishing a COVID-19 Business Impact Assistant Program. Mr. Trainer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The resolution in front of you establishes, as the mayor mentioned, a small business impact assistance program. And the concept was, let me back up a little bit. We all know that the businesses in our community are really suffering from the coronavirus and the impacts it has had on their, on their business models. And so when the county discussed providing us 2.4 million, that 2.4, which by the way, and I appreciate both the mayor's and councilmember Thompson's comments, they were just very gracious in reaching out to us and generous as well, understanding that they have bared the lion's share of the impact, but at the same time, understanding that our community is definitely feeling impacts as well. So as we look at the 2.4 million that they're providing to the city, those, the use of those funds is very restricted. It really can only be used for very specific things that are specifically tied to coronavirus. Expenditures that the city has and that can't, that doesn't include things like revenues that we've lost. And so it's very limited and fortunately for us, while we do have some very significant costs associated with the coronavirus and our impacts to it or, or due to it. And that includes everything from, you know, buying the little Purell hand sanitizers by the gross as well as sanitizing buildings. But it also includes PPE for employees and for first responders, additional shifts that some of them had to be on, those sorts of things. Those are the kind of things we will be tracking very closely to make sure that we get completely paid back for through this program. However, even in doing that, we sort of recognize that the reality is that the city of Fountain won't be able to use that 2.4, the full 2.4 million. In fact, I suspect we'll be probably able to be reimbursed about half of that, that we can legitimately tie to our expenditures. And so knowing that, it made sense that, you know, we want to make sure that we're also reaching out and providing those funds to the businesses. And one of the, one of the allowed uses for those funds is to create an economic assistance program like the one I'm presenting to you today. So this draft program essentially provides a micro grant program for small businesses in our community that have felt the impacts of coronavirus. And that could be from having to shut down or having reduced hours. It could be revenue impacts. It could be loss of employees or just, it could be actually physical improvements they had to make to their facilities to meet the various requirements associated with. There's a whole number of things that, that impact our small businesses in our community. And so we wanted to make sure that we drafted up some kind of business impact assistance program, which is what you have before you, that a business could reach out and apply for and receive some micro grants to at least help mitigate some of those impacts to their businesses. So the business before you first, or the, the program before you, first of all, I want to point out one minor typo. And that's really on the first page where in the, under the program objectives, that bottom paragraph says this program does, does guarantee the city's financial assistance. That should be, does not guarantee the city's financial assistance. I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that here. However, what we're asking for is the council to set aside approximately 1.4 million from that current CARES Act shareback to be provided to small businesses in the community. And so those small businesses, if you look down on the eligibility piece of that program, would, would include small businesses that have 20 or fewer full-time employees. And then the micro grants that are being envisioned would be based on our available funds, obviously, for up to $3,000 per employee with a maximum limit of 15,000. And we had to do a limit because obviously we have a lot of businesses and we want to be able to spread that out as much as we possibly can. If you look at the program, the priority funding is applied to businesses who have been either required to close due to health, health orders or who can demonstrate a significant reduction in business volume. Businesses that can function remotely will be considered as a lower priority, such as real estate groups, architects, construction, et cetera. Non-franchise businesses have priority over franchise businesses and resident owners of businesses will have a priority over non-resident owners. I want to point that out just because we wanted to create some sort of priority system that'll allow us to go through and evaluate each of the grant applications and, and provide grants accordingly with that. We created a, a scoring sheet that would, that would tie in those priorities. By the way, that doesn't mean that a non-resident business owner wouldn't be eligible. They would just be lower down the priority list. And so I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out to the council. And then, then I also wanted to point out that finally, we're, we understand that there will probably be some changes, some modifications to this program, at least sort of in the operations of it. And we want to meet with the county to, in fact, the meeting with the county tomorrow to walk through what those changes might be. We just want to make sure it's meeting every, every single requirement of the CARES Act that the county has. So be, so before we pull the trigger, I want to do that. However, at the same time, because of the necessity of these funds, I didn't want to necessarily wait till June ninth to bring something before the city council, because, because I think this needs to be out there and working for our community businesses just as soon as we can with as little bureaucracy as we can provide. So anyway, that's the, that's the overview. Are there any questions that anyone has on that?
I'm checking, Scott. I don't see anybody yet. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. Thanks for working on this and putting it together. I know, hopefully we'll be able to help. I mean, it's a little bit, but hopefully they'll, they'll be able to do something with it. And, and you know, just ease that burden a little bit, which has been really hard. But as someone said earlier, nice seeing things open and hopefully it'll move a little bit further. I don't see any mics or anything on. I want to make sure I don't miss anybody. Okay, I guess we're good. Okay, Ms. Duncan. Oh, now you're back off. Okay, what would council like to do with this item?
I'm Estes. To make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to adopt resolution twenty dash zero three nine. A resolution establishing the COVID-19 Business Impact Assistant Program.
Okay, and also have a ton of lights on, so hope I didn't miss anything. Mr. Applegate?
I second.
Okay, before we do a vote, did anybody have anything further they want to add to that?
Scott, I think this is a fantastic idea. As you know, many of our small and micro businesses didn't qualify or aren't receiving any of the, the funds from who knows what act at this point. There's so many different things. But for whatever reason, they didn't qualify, didn't get it in. Or maybe the amount they got, you know, was maybe only about a thousand dollars. And, and so, you know, any little bit of money is going to help and add up. So hats off to you. It's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, Mr. Applegate, did you have anything?
No, that's good.
Okay, okay, we do have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
A two thumbs up, yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, wonderful. I think that's it for our meeting tonight. I'll go ahead and do item number 10, correspondence, comments and ex officia reports. I'll start with Scott. Anything further?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in the, in the continuing vein, I just have one thing, but it might take a minute. But just in the continuing vein of supporting our small businesses, we've been having some conversations internally about what we can do. You know, we, the governor announced this reopening for restaurants, which really for this, for El Paso County, since their variance was approved is, is now. But there's really two components to that. There's a planning component. If our restaurants want to expand out into their parking area or some of those spaces, that's a, that's something that the state mentioned that they're comfortable with as long as it's allowable by the local planning authority, which is us. And then the other piece of that component is the liquor license component for those restaurants that have liquor licenses. And so I know that the, the state is expediting their liquor license modification review. And we want to do the same kind of thing on the city side because we want to be able to do it concurrently. So it's not this first and then this and just extends us out for local businesses. So Sylvia Huffman is our, of course, runs our liquor licensing here. And so she and our city attorney are going to be working on a resolution to bring before, and it may have been in ordinance, but I think from my understanding, and Sylvia can correct me, but I think it's going to be a resolution that would on a temporary basis allow the city clerk to go ahead and approve, review and approve the modifications to expedite that process through the city to get rid of some of that bureaucracy. So that normally those modifications have to come through the city council. And so rather than having that process kind of line up and just lengthen that timeframe, the idea would be, or the, the request would be to bring a resolution from the council where the city council would approve or temporarily doing that sort of thing, thing for a short amount of time. The, so that's the liquor license component. The other component, the planning component, we think we can handle on a temporary use basis. So if, and, and my suggestion on that, by the way, wouldn't be limited to just restaurants. It would be if the, if a small business exhibits a need to expand their space for whatever reason, to, due to requirements of the, of COVID-19, that we would review that and expedite that as a temporary use permit, waiving the fees associated with that, by the way. And, and I think we would rather do that from our standpoint, the recommendation that we would do that for businesses as a whole, as opposed to just restaurants, because there may be some, you know, local retailers or other businesses that have a need to do, to do that same sort of thing. So two things, number one, I wanted to let the council know that's sort of the path that we're heading down. And we think we can do that through the, the planning component through a temporary use permit. But that the liquor license definitely has to go through the state requirements. They control that. And so the request for the city council to consider would be to allow us to schedule a really brief, but what's the phrase I'm looking for? Short, short notification, emergency council meeting for Monday night. And Sylvia, if I'm wrong, jump in and correct me, but Monday night where the council could get on and just consider that resolution so we can continue moving forward for those small businesses and, and the city. Sylvia, did I miss anything on that?
No, I think you, you covered everything. Just logistically, it's, it wouldn't be considered an emergency meeting, just a special meeting. But you, you got everything covered, Scott.
Okay, Ms. Thompson.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate the fact it's going to be to all businesses and not just, you know, restaurants. Because we do need to, you know, continue giving our businesses the chance to open. And just, just really please stress that this is temporary. I don't want anybody go out and spend 10, $15,000 on like a bunch of picnic tables or something and then, you know, they can't use them in a couple of months. So that's, that's really important. What about the farmer's market, Scott?
Okay, so let me, let me jump to your first question or your first comment first. I think your comment about making sure they understand it's temporary, that was really important to us, which is why we landed on this idea of the temporary use permit. Because it's very clear, just in the nature of the title of that, that it's a temporary use and we would actually put a timeframe associated with that, associated with that. So I think that, yeah, Councilmember Thompson, that is, I think that's really important. So the, the market out here, we didn't have a specific conversation about the market. However, I think that's something that we really want to try to accommodate and treating it as a, as we would a single retail business. And so we've talked with, oh, what's her name, Diane, and talked about some potential requirements for that. And those requirements would be social distancing. It would be marking out a specific one-way sort of route. It would be separation between the vendors, et cetera. And then we would monitor that on a, on a week-by-week basis. And so that we would, we want to try that out to see if we can allow that to happen. Again, hoping that, hoping for the best, but if it doesn't work out, then we would probably disallow that. Sylvia, by the way, has been working on that as well and I'm trying to help out with that.
Yeah, I know a lot of people talking about wanting farmer's markets to open up, get, you know, less, one less thing to go to the grocery store and, you know, fresh fruit, vegetables. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Scott, did you need us to approve anything as far as Monday or just, we know that's going to happen?
Unless I hear anything, any of the councilmembers saying, no, we really, let's not do that, then if that's okay, I'll plan on working with Sylvia to, to schedule that special meeting. It would just be a single item meeting that we could just discuss that briefly and, and get that going as quickly as we can.
I know I'm not going to be around on Monday. I may, I may have service, but I'm, we're going camping, so I don't know. Will it be okay if I'm not available just in case?
Yeah, I think, I think as long as we have a quorum, then yeah, absolutely.
All right, okay. I will try to get on as, as long as I have a service, I'll get on real quick for that. Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Mr. Evans, are you on?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't, I am, thank you. Don't have anything tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Troy. I thought I saw his name on earlier. He is there. Let me see if I can unmute him. There you go.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I just, I was having trouble joining as a, as a host. So thanks for picking my hand while I raised my hand. All that to say, I don't have anything tonight. Good day, good day here from you all, though.
Okay, thanks, Troy. Chief Maxon, are you still on?
I'm still here. All is well and thank you very much.
Okay, anything you could report on the PD side?
Well, we did have that incident today and we were able to get both patients off the, the scene very quickly. And everything else on that will have to come from the PD.
Okay.
But other than that, you know, everything is going very well in Fountain for public safety.
Okay, great, thanks. Let me see. Mr. Lovell? Anything on IT?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, but thank you and good evening to everyone.
Okay, again, Paul, Lisa, Mr. Bobbi, I know he's on. Thanks for all your hard work and making sure this, these meetings go as smoothly as possible. And, and you know, we're, we've been doing pretty good and, and I appreciate all the hard work you guys have done. And, and, uh, you know, we're, we've been doing pretty good and, and I appreciate all the hard work you guys have done and, and putting this together for us.
On behalf of our staff, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Blankenship, I saw that you were on earlier.
Yes, sir, I am here.
Okay, anything from utilities? Are you guys doing good? How's everything going on?
Friday is Curtis's last day. Um, it's week five for me and each week, uh, just keeps getting better. So I'm, once again, I'm, I'm thrilled and honored to be here and looking forward to, uh, long, successful, uh, tenure here.
Okay, great. Alrighty, uh, Ms. Huffman?
Uh, just one quick thing for the public and for council. I'll be reaching out to city council to confirm that date on Monday. Um, who will be able to attend and it will be published, uh, for the public to be able to attend as well. And that's all I have.
Okay, um, I think that's what I have for staff. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and run through council again. If, if any, if I'm missing staff, please let me know and I'll, we'll make sure you can, uh, get on real quick. Um, Ms. Duncan, anything?
Okay, I had raised my hand earlier when we were talking about the restaurant's reopening, uh, the Pike's Peak Workforce Development, exploring Safe Serve. They offer free training for restaurants on serving food and alcohol safety during this time. So if any of the restaurants would like to take advantage of that, that's available. That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for missing that. Um, Mr. Geek, anything?
Yes, I've got, uh, a couple of comments about the COVID cases in Fountain. Uh, the information I got today was that there's fifty-five cases in Fountain. Uh, also provided, uh, John Trilch and, uh, LaShia information is in regards to the eight oh eight one seven, the eight oh nine two five and the eight oh nine one one, uh, zip codes, because they've got that information available too. So currently, there's fifty-five cases in Fountain today, but with those other zip codes, it's kind of hard to put everything together. So that's where we're at.
Okay, so the fifty-fives just in Fountain or all three of those zip codes?
That's it, just in Fountain, down to the city limits.
And it's the, from the beginning of when they first started tracking all this, not fifty-five currently?
Today, there's fifty-five cases today.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Anything else?
Well, that's it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Applegate?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Estes?
I don't have anything else tonight. Thanks so much for everybody, all the hard work they're doing.
Alrighty, uh, Mayor Protem?
Nothing more for me tonight, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, um, I was wondering if we could get an update on when our court is going to be back open again. I've spoken to some people who work within the court industry and, and, but not just our court, but courts around everywhere are just, uh, things are getting pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. And it's really starting to have an impact on people's lives, um, not being able to settle things, move along, get things taken care of. And so I know we're not nearly on the level as the county and the state courts are, we're looking at, but, um, just any update we could get on, on when that's going to be open. I just think it's as important to open our courts back up as it is for us to be meeting as councilmembers again too. And I don't know if we have to deal with the, do with the doctor's office where you make an appointment and they call you when it's your turn to come in from the parking lot or, you know, you have to make an appointment. I, I don't know how that would work. I don't know if Troy has an update, if he's still in the line. But I, I just think that's a really important part of our society. We need to get back open again.
Okay, Troy?
There we go. Um, yeah, it's a, I agree with council, councilmember Thompson. Uh, it's a, it's a very important to get back open. You know, the governor declared it as an essential service. Um, and so what we're doing now, um, is, uh, our court staff is back in the office, but the, uh, the, the court itself is not open. And so, um, we are doing our best to, uh, the court staff is doing their best to call, um, all of the people that have, uh, court appearances and doing whatever they can over the phone, taking payments, um, reviewing cases and things like that. Um, eventually we'll have to, to open up with some of those precautions. We have not done that yet. And we're doing kind of all that we can to do it over the phone, um, so that we can really limit the in-person things that need to happen. Um, and so, uh, we're doing that right now and, and it's, it's working fairly well, um, just kind of keeping everything afloat. Uh, but, but we are headed towards the day when, when we have to open up with some of those precautions. Um, we don't have a date certain yet of, of when that will be, um, but it is probably coming within the next, uh, few weeks at least.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Troy.
Okay, anything else? Okay, um, and then I don't have anything on my end. Remember, our next meeting will be June ninth. Uh, keep an eye out on, uh, our, our Facebook probably and our, uh, webpage to see, um, if we will have some in-person, uh, meeting is going on as well. So, uh, I plan on trying to be back as much as possible. I'm starting that next meeting. Uh, if councilmembers and/or public want to stay, uh, remote still, we can continue doing that until everyone feels safe enough that, uh, we can have a full council in. So there's no rush. I don't want, uh, anybody to feel pressured, but, uh, um, since we do have this ability here, um, we'll continue moving forward as, as that goes. So, um, with that, our next meeting is June ninth. We have no executive session. So, uh, unless I hear anything else, we are adjourned. Take care, everybody.